Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 18th meeting of the Select Board. To bring ourselves to order and start with announcements. Peter, if you could take it away.
Good evening. Few announcements here tonight. There will be a regional drive through the recycling and reuse event on June 22nd. The event will be held on the Tufts University Campus at 201 Westboro Road, North Grafton. Recycle Electronics, Textiles, and more. For more information, visit wecan-ma.org. The Grafton's Farmers Market will be returning to the Grafton Common tomorrow, June 19th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for each Wednesday thereafter through October 9th. We hope you all can make some time and go up there and visit that. And last but not least, just last minute announcement. I'm sure most of you read this in the paper or have been online, but this Sunday, June 23rd, there will be a public dedication for the Stephen H. Roney Memorial Park from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. in North Grafton. We hope you can also make it there, too. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Peter. We have three public hearings scheduled for this evening. We have one member that's stuck in traffic. We're going to give him the opportunity to get here. So we're going to conduct some of the other businesses on the agenda tonight. We have two affirmations. Christopher Brandt and John Gilbert, DPW heavy truck drivers. They're in attendance tonight, so... Hi, guys. Entertain a motion to affirm the appointments unless somebody has any direct questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move the board vote to affirm the appointments of Christopher Brandt and John Gilbert to the position of heavy truck driver and equipment operator.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just would like to ask Kevin to give a quick... Do you mind just introducing him real quick and giving a quick overview of our appointees and what they bring to the department?
I don't know if...
You don't have to.
Closest to me is Chris, and John's against the wall. Chris has worked with us over the winter plowing for an outside contractor. And a lot of the things that he does mechanically-wise and truck-driving-wise is going to help. They... Both of them have a lot of experience. John, on the other hand, has a lot of tree experience with tree removal and everything like that. And as we know, Rick Majwan, that retired a few months back, he was our tree guy. So he's definitely got some big shoes to fill, but definitely welcome. But they both got the credentials they need to help us out, get us through the winter and everyday jobs.
Great. Thank you.
All right.
Welcome.
Are there any other discussions? Everybody's outside with the current motion on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Thank you very much, guys. Thanks for coming out tonight, too. All right. We do have... Is there anybody here for the Steve's Park, for the one-day beer and wine? This is for the park dedication on...
Just coming south of the road.
Just running off the announcement. Anybody have any issue? And I'll entertain a motion for this as well.
Do we have their tip certifications and all that?
Has everything been...
Yeah, I'm sure... I have no doubt in my mind that Cindy made sure that was complied with.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move the board vote to approve the one-day beer and wine license for the Stephen Roney Park dedication on June 23rd, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Let's see. So for appointments, the Select Board should be able to breeze through this, too. Designate Select Board representatives to boards and committees. The four that we have on the agenda tonight: Economic Development, the Tax Increment Committee, Cable License Negotiating Committee, and Central Mass Regional Planning Committee.
I'll make a motion if you're ready.
You want to be on all of them?
I wasn't going to nominate myself.
Oh.
I was going to make a motion to...
Sure.
For Doreen to be on EDC.
Anybody have any objections? I hear second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Tax Increment Committee.
We'll also make a motion for Doreen because those two kind of go hand-in-hand.
Yep. Those are both what Craig was on when he left, right?
Yep.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Cable License Negotiating Committee. So the one particular license we have up next is Charter, right?
Correct.
Okay. When does that start?
It's already begun. You'll need to have an ascertatement hearing in the next couple of weeks, couple of months, probably.
Okay.
Historically, it's been the chair, but it could be anybody.
Historically?
Historically.
What type of... How often do they meet?
It's kind of as needed, and it's during the day, mostly.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bruce to the Cable License Negotiating Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And Central Mass Regional Planning Committee.
This is really a backup firm. I think I'm the first designated, and then Craig was the second, so...
Sure, I'll do it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jan Thomas to the Central Mass Regional Plan Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Here we go. Election worker, Jan.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble following because we're...
I know.
Mr. Chairman.
We're writing appointments.
No, I know. I'm following on the paperwork today.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to appoint Jane Baraban as election worker.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the annual appointment list. We have a new, updated list that if we're due by motion, we can do it as presented.
I move the board vote to approve the annual appointments as per the appointment list dated June 18th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to give them like three more minutes because we're going to go through the rest of this evening anyways. We do have meeting minutes, April 16th and May 7th. Has everybody had a chance to review?
Wasn't my meeting, but... I'll make the motion to approve them.
That'd be fine.
I move the board vote to accept the meeting minutes of April 16th, 2019, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? And then May 7th.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to accept the meeting minutes of May 7th as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we hopped around a little bit. We have the first of three public hearings this evening, first being Hema Investment, DBA, New Ultramart. I'm going to have the clerk read in the hearing notice, and then we'll open the public hearing.
I'm just going to read the motion.
We don't have the actual...
Nope. We don't need to read the notice.
No, just the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to open the public hearing for Hema Investment, DBA, New Ultramart.
Second.
Any discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So this is a liquor license violation hearing. The chief is present. Chief, if you could start us off, please. Let us know what... Take us through everything that you...
Mr. Chief, you might want to swear. Everybody who's going to give testimony first.
Okay. Do we have representatives here from Hema Investment? If you could please stand. All right.
Yeah, Liam will offer testimony.
All right. I have never done this before. What's the...
There's a written note right there for swearing or nothing.
Thank you for preparing me and me not looking where I'm supposed to look. Are you the only person that's going to give testimony this evening with regards to Hema Investment?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. And you, sir? Do you swear that testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, officer. Did you want to come up here, please?
If it's easy, I'll have Sergeant O'Rourke up here, and I'll sit here for... I don't know if you want to do recommendations after each hearing or do them all at once afterwards. It's up to you.
You know what? I'm... I would like to do everything separate, but if it's up to the board. And these are all first-time violations, is your recommendation?
One, I'll bring up...
Let's do them all separate.
Then we'll do them all separate.
All right. This is Sergeant O'Rourke. He conducted the investigation.
Sergeant O'Rourke, I missed you on this particular oath. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke.
You have my report and my summary of the violations that occurred on May 24th, 2019. Members of the Grafton Police Department conducted an underage drinking compliance check utilizing an undercover officer from out of town and an underage person known as a UP who is 20 years old. The operation focused on all establishments licensed to serve alcoholic beverages that were open for business on that date. Sergeant Liam O'Rourke and Detective Daniel Wentz conducted the investigation. A total of 19 establishments were visited throughout the evening. As a result of the operation, the following establishments were found to be in violation by serving an alcoholic beverage to a person under 21 years of age. Ultramart is the fir... We're doing them first at 215 Worcester Street. When the operation was completed, the officers returned to the aforementioned establishments to notify staff that they were in violation. They were also informed that they would be receiving notice from the Board of Selectmen acting as liquor agents, liquor license agents. I can let Sergeant O'Rourke give you the details for each different operation that was done, those in violation.
Evening. So as the chief said, on Friday, May 24th, around 6:30, we conducted the alcohol compliance check within the town of Grafton for all licensed establishments. We... Prior to the investigation, we contacted the chief Mahoney from the ABCC, which is the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, and spoke with him for two purposes. One, for de-confliction, because they conduct their own investigations throughout the year, as well as to make sure that we were following the most recent and up-to-date guidelines set out by them, which we were. Prior to the investigation, on May 14th, the chief had published a notification on both the Grafton Police Department's Facebook page and within the local newspaper, the Grafton News. He made it known his intent to combat underage drinking by conducting random compliance checks of the local licensed liquor establishments, as well as enhanced enforcement of underage liquor laws through party patrols and undercover surveillance throughout the upcoming months. On the May 24th, around 6:30, Detective Wentz and I met a 20-year-old male subject who had voluntarily elected to assist us with this investigation. His identity is known to myself and the chief and the police department. For this purpose, we'll just refer to him as an underage person or a UP. At approximately 7:52, the UP entered the Ultramart located at 215 Worcester Street, and he attempted to purchase a six-pack of Bud Light with no identification. Prior to the investigation, what the guidelines were, that he had nothing in his possession, not a cell phone, not a license, and the only funds he was given were confidential funds provided by the police department. He was also given a portable breath test to determine that he had no alcohol in his system prior to entering any of these establishments, and again at the end of the night when the investigation was concluded. Officer Fortunato, who was the outside officer, observed the male clerk complete a sale to the UP without checking or asking for his identification. The UP paid for the alcohol and exited the store as instructed, and the alcohol was secured by Officer Fortunato in his undercover vehicle. Officer Fortunato provided a description of the male clerk that completed the transaction, who was found to be in violation of the law. The clerk was described as a male of Indian descent, wearing a yellow shirt and tattoo on his arm. We responded back to that location at the end of the investigation at approximately 9:35, and found the business to be closed for the night. Detective Wentz conducted a follow-up investigation and spoke... Ultimately spoke with the owner of the store, Manish Patel, and identified himself, as well as the purpose for his call. He... Mr. Patel identified the clerk as working that night as a Saran Namaani and indicated he was just a temporary worker filling in for that particular night. Those are essentially the facts of the incident.
Does anybody have any immediate questions for Officer O'Rourke? Okay. I'm going to allow... Excuse me. Your name was?
My name is Manish Patel.
Why don't you come up and sit down? And then just identify yourself for more members here.
Yeah, Manish Patel, and we owned the Ultramart for like the last seven years. And I like managed the store and like on the day-to-day basis, and I supervise that my all employees like obey the laws. And actually, the day that incident happened, I was out of town. I went to Biloxi, Mississippi, and to attend my nephew's graduation. So I have a proof also. And Sharon is not a regular employee, but I have to call him, you know? Normally, I'm over there, and he was working over there, and I know. He was not tip-certified, so I did a mistake. And we'll be very careful next time not to repeat the mistake. And, you know, in past seven years also, they always... We are careful, and you know, we never sold any beer to underage, you know? So I won't repeat the mistake, and we'll make sure that our other employees are tip-certified, you know?
Just briefly, for the record, could you say where you live? Where you live?
Oh, I live in Swoosbury, sir. 23 Slocum, Madeleine, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any questions?
Would this individual be working at your store?
No, he's no more, sir. He won't be working for us no more. He's done.
Okay.
And he was tip-certified?
He was not, actually. So he was a temporary, you know? I think that's the thing, yeah. And unfortunately, I had to keep calling him, you know, for the work because I was out of town. So normally, I manage the business, you know?
How long had he been working for you?
He... See, he was working in the morning time. He worked for a couple of months before, and then he quit the job, you know? So he was not even working for me. So I had to call him and, you know, because I was away from the town I'm in.
So he was your go-to person for if you couldn't be there yourself, or you didn't have a full-time worker?
Exactly. That's the reason I had to call him, yeah. And this...
All right.
Another question. Mr. Carlson. In the event that you're out of town again and your store has to remain open, what plans can you assure us today that you will have someone who is tip-certified working behind the counter?
Yeah, we'll make sure that all of our employees are tip-certified, you know? We guarantee that, yeah. Without that, we won't allow anybody to work at the store, you know?
From here forward?
Yeah. Most... Like, one of them is not right now because we just hired a new one, you know? And we'll make sure that that employee is also tip-certified, you know? We just hired recently, yeah.
How long is the tip certification process? How long does it take?
It takes like four... Three to four hours, and the same day you can tip-certify, yeah. It's...
Okay. Jan, did you have a question?
I had two.
Please.
First of all, for Chief Crapo, has this location been visited during your sting operations before?
The many times? We... Yeah, we have visited in the past. We hadn't done it in a while because we've had a hot time finding a underage person to work. But...
But this establishment has passed in the past?
By us in the past. However, when your questioning is done, I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
Of course.
Please.
My... Oh, go ahead.
No, no. Go ahead. Please.
My other question was, other establishments we have... We know have systems in which a license has to be scanned in order to complete the sale. Do you have such a system?
Yeah, we do have a system, ma'am.
But he just chose not to use it?
That guy, yeah, because, yeah, he was not tip-certified, so he was... He didn't know.
But how does the cash register will open anyway, even if...
No, we have a separate machine where you have to put your ID, scan the ID, and it will tell you that his ID is real or not, you know? If it's the guy's okay with the thing or not, you know?
But if he's...
To buy the beer, yeah.
If he's really lazy, he just doesn't have to do it. He can access the register, and whomever comes in can just buy whatever.
We can add that thing in the system that if it's, you know, that he has to add, I mean, enter the ID all the time, yeah, we can add in the system, yeah.
I think that should be there.
We have a... The location, yeah, we have the same thing. But we have to add this thing in the system, yeah. We haven't added it yet.
And what you said just a few minutes ago is you just added another employee, but that employee's not tip-certified yet?
Not yet. So we will make sure that he is. And I just talked with him like a couple of days ago that make sure you get tip-certified, you know? So, and I will make sure from now on that all the employees we hire is tip-certified before he start working, you know?
Okay. I'm going to allow the chief to ask a couple of questions, and this is more from the board. Please, chief.
Mr. Patel, correct?
Yes.
You own or are principal party in Hema Investments, DBA Ultramart?
Yes, sir.
Yes. How long have you owned the business?
This business is there for like almost seven years, I would say.
Seven years.
But we are in business for like 15, 20 years. Same corporation, I would say.
So you own the Hema Investments, DBA Ultramart on... In June of 2016?
No, I would say 13 of February 13, 2013.
Right. But you owned the Ultramart on June of 2016, three years ago? You were the owner?
Three years. Yeah, right there, yeah.
All right. It was your contention that you've never been cited before for a liquor violation? You just said that under oath?
We did from the... Yeah, one time before, yeah, long back.
So you did receive a violation before?
From the state, yeah, we did one time.
Okay. That was on June 9th, 2016?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I don't remember the date, but we were long back when we...
Got a... Post, we don't want to hear. Do you recognize this? This is addressed to you.
Yes, yes. Long back, yeah. From the state, actually, not from the town, yeah, yeah. But after that, we were careful with that.
Thank you. I assume the board has a copy of this to ABCC. Okay.
So technically speaking, this is a second violation?
This is a second violation, yes.
Okay. Which in the past, we haven't done many of these, but have done a few. Typically, the path we take is incremental, so to speak, built on itself.
Progressive disciplines, how we look at it.
Do you have any other questions? Jan, do you have something now?
Nope. Doreen, I think had a question, did he?
Nope. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. So I assume you have a recommendation for us?
Well, for the record, at that time, the facts were substantiated by the ABCC after a hearing in Boston. That was... The hearing date was on 2/14/2017. At that time, they received a suspended license. It was held in abeyance for three days, and it was held over for a period of two years, basically two years probation, provided no violations of Chapter 138 or Commission regulations occur. Now, it's been a little over two years. However, based on this fact that there is another violation, I would recommend we do a three-day suspension again. We'll hold it in abeyance because this is the first one in Grafton, but I would do the same exact thing the ABCC did. If this was within a two-year period, then I would request that this be... That suspension be enacted. But since it's over the two years, as established by ABCC, I'll recommend a three-day suspension held in abeyance with two-year, if you want to call it probation. And all employees are to receive tips training with cards or certificates submitted to my office or the Board of... The Select Board's office within 30 days. If not... If they're not submitted by that time, then I would call that a separate violation and request another hearing.
Okay.
I would just ask the board to have them be clear to send to the chief instead...
Yeah, that's... Yeah, however you choose.
Yeah, just so we're clear. He's clear. Whatever... If they vote that, you should get those certificates to the chief.
Yes, I understand, yeah. We'll be...
Okay. Now, this is a public hearing. Somebody might have to help me navigate this particular piece. Do we... If we take public input from the public, does each individual manage a public account that you support in?
I don't think so, no.
Is there anybody here this evening to speak on this particular matter? I guess that solves that. All right. So we have a recommendation from the chief. We need to close out the public hearing and make a decision.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So this is technically a second time we have a recommendation from the chief. In the past, this is typically what we've used to move forward. We have a lot of new membership and a lot of that haven't been through one of these in particular, so we're not set by a particular precedent. So if anybody has any other input or has any other questions for the chief about what we've done in the past, before we move to a motion? No? Peter, do you have something?
I don't.
Okay. So the chief's recommendation was a three-day suspension, of which you decide the days?
No. What I... What I'm recommending is exactly what ABCC gave them. Three-day suspension, three days to be held in abeyance for a period of two years, and if he doesn't have any more violations, then that would be...
All right. And then all employees to be tip-certified within 30 days?
Yes, sir.
And then everything submitted to Grafton Chief of Police's office, or it will be a separate violation, of which you'll be back here, and we'll start from ground one. Is everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Then we'll need a fight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to, um, move the board vote to accept the recommendation of Chief Crepo for a three-day suspension held in advance with a two-year probation for Hema Investments, Ultramart, um, and also require all employees to retake the tips training classes within thirty days with record brought to, uh, the police chief.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before we second that, would the, would Mr. Fazio, please, exchange the word "advance" for the word "abeyance" in your motion, as per the chief's recommendation?
To the word what? I'm sorry.
Abeyance.
Abeyance?
Yes, please.
I think that's what she said.
She said "abeyance."
She said "abeyance." Do we have another second, Jen?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's one. The next we have, uh, this-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, tap-in table one ninety-eight, DBA reunion tap-in table. Representatives, um, come up. We're gonna open a public hearing. I have to swear you in.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gross.
I move the board vote to open the public hearing for tap-in table one ninety-eight, DBA reunion tap-in table.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should I swear in the chief and Detective O'Rourke again? Okay. Detective O'Rourke and chief, chief, you don't mind standing? And then any representative of, um, tap-in table one ninety-eight, if you're gonna speak on this matter this evening. Uh, if you raise your right hand, please. Do all of you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it?
I do.
Alright.
Okay. Again, on Friday, May twenty-fourth, um, the town of Grafton, we conducted the alcohol compliance operation. At approximately nineteen fifty-nine hours, uh, the underage person on the UP entered the reunion tap-in table located at one ninety-eight Worcester Street, attempted to purchase the Bud Light with no identification. Officer Fortunato observed a female bartender serve the UP, the alcohol as requested, and complete the sale with the UP without checking or asking for identification. The UP paid for the alcohol and exited the bar as instructed, and Officer Fortunato provided a description of the, uh, female clerk, described as a white female with dirty blonde hair and a ponytail, wearing a black v-neck style tee shirt. When the investigations, uh, checks were completed, we returned to the reunion tap-in table at eleven twenty, uh, nine twenty-four, and we were met by the on-duty manager identified as a Gary Benacquista. Uh, we spoke with, uh, Mr. Benacquista and advised him of the reason for our presence. Um, he indicated that he had saw the violation happen while he was on duty, but that he, he was tending to some other customers and ultimately couldn't, uh, interrupt the sale from where his position was in the, in the bar, and it was too late to intervene. Um, he indicated that the bartender never did ask for identification, and he identified that bartender as a Felicia Morosky. He stated that he sent her home for the night after the violation occurred and, uh, provided us with, uh, her information as well as, uh, other information we had asked for. He did advise us that she was tip certified, and this was, uh, his first violation in twenty-two years in the industry.
Okay. So, any, any questions for Detective O'Rourke? Gary, if you don't mind introducing yourself?
Hi, um, I'm Gary Benacquista and the general manager at reunion tap-in table.
Where do you live?
I live in, uh, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts.
Thank you. So you were, you were on duty. Why don't you walk us through what happened?
So, um, I just wanna kind of clarify, uh, uh, the way everything was stated, just slightly, just to make sure everything is accurate, uh, since I'm under oath. Um, so, uh, the detectives came in, um, and I, I told them I knew that they were there because one of our managers had, had, um, served somebody who was underage, and, uh, they asked, uh, who it was. I identified her, and, um, then, um, so, what, what, initially what happened was, when the guest came in and was served, the, the bartender told us, uh, that she had not ID'd the, the person, um, and we, we reviewed it on our video surveillance system. Um, so, uh, we saw that she had, uh, not carded the, the person, so I, I told the officers that, uh, you know, we, we observed her s- uh, serving a Bud Light, uh, him handing her cash in, uh, and, uh, her never asking for any sort of identification. Uh, so, uh, when we talked to her, you know, we said, you know, we should send you home for the evening, we'll figure out what's next. Um, and, uh, that's, that's the, the best recollection of the story. I just wanna make sure that, you know, that we're all in agreement about what happened that night.
That seems pretty much the same thing that he just-
Yeah, it's, yeah, just wanna make sure that they're the same details, for the record.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for Gary? Okay, chief?
Uh, this is a first violation for, uh, reunion. Um, the, the only thing is, I was checking my files. I don't have any tips cards for the reunion tap-in table from any of the employees at all. I believe that was supposed to be sent out when they were approved for their liquor license. I don't know if-
I didn't read the meeting minutes when it got approved to see if they were required or not.
But, uh, so, um-
I did send some, uh, by email. I'm not sure where it was sent. I don't know if it went to, um, the Board of Health or the, or the, somebody at the police department, but, uh, they were requested from me at one point. I did send what I had at that, at that time. I could look into my emails and figure out-
It shouldn't be too difficult to go through it all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would have a record of that in my emails.
But, that notwithstanding, uh, once again, this is a first violation. Um, what I would recommend is what we, what we've done in the past, first violations, uh, to give a warning, uh, and, uh, all employees, whether certified or not, have to redo the training, tips training, with, with, uh, cards or certifications sent to my office within thirty days. Fail to do so will constitute a separate violation.
Alright, is there anybody else? I'm seeing that we sworn a few people that have testimony to give. Alright, that means-
If I may be clear, too, on this file, this is a classroom taught tips, not an online tips class, so they get a little more out of it if they actually have a person in front of them.
Chief, I have a quick question. Ultramart got a three-day suspension held in abeyance for their first violation as well?
This wasn't their first, though.
Okay, so, this wasn't their first, but the one that happened to them before that you referenced back in twenty sixteen?
That was through ABBCC.
Oh, that was through ABBCC that levied that, okay. I just wanna make sure we're being consistent.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion then, Chris?
Not yet.
Oh.
I've seen that this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that we should speak on this? Okay, we can close the public hearing then.
Motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Alright, so now we have a recommendation from the chief. Um, I'll entertain a motion unless anybody has any further questions.
I move the board vote to accept the recommendation of Chief Crepo for, to issue a warning and to require all employees to retake the tips training classes and send the certifications to Chief Crepo.
Second.
Within thirty days?
Within thirty days.
Within thirty days.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I do. Just, do we wanna specify classroom tip certification, or are you just saying any tip certification in your motion?
I said tips training classes.
You did, okay, thank you.
And that, and that applies to all current employees who serve alcohol, uh, regardless of how recently they've taken the class.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, hearing none? And the last one, Gary, just step down.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
The last one of the evening, Sanheim Incorporated, DBA Pub one twenty-two.
Hi, Board of Suck. This pronoun's Sangham?
Sangham?
Yes, S-A-G-A-M. Just to correct it on the records.
We're gonna read, uh, we're gonna open a public hearing?
Give one second, I'm trying to pull the motion up, but, uh, this is keeping me up. Thanks, Jen.
I move the board vote to open a public hearing for Sangham?
Sangham.
Sangham Incorporated, DBA Pub one twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, is anybody besides the three people standing now providing testimony tonight in this particular matter? Okay. Do you three of you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear that, that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Detective O'Rourke, please.
Again, uh, on May twenty-fourth, uh, Friday, May twenty-fourth, at approximately seven fifty-three, uh, Grafton Police conducted a alcohol compliance operation and sent a underage person into the Pub one twenty-two located at two fifteen Worcester Street. The underage person attempted to purchase a bottle of Bud Light with no identification in his possession. Officer Fortunato observed the female bartender serve the underage person the alcohol and complete the sale with the underage person without checking or asking for identification. The underage person paid for the alcohol and exited the bar, and Officer Fortunato provided us with a description of the bartender who was found to be in violation of the law. The clerk was described as a white female, a cuir and a ponytail, wearing an awkward blue collar tank top. When the compliance checks were completed, we returned back to Pub one twenty-two at, at around nine thirty-six, and we were met by the female bartender who we identified as a, uh, Tracy Felicia, as well as a Felicia Tracy and a Garav Sharma, the business owner, who identified himself. We spoke with Mr. Sharma and Tracy and advised him of the reason for our presence. Uh, Tracy indicated that she was busy at the time with other customers and did not ask or check for identification, um, and served the, uh, the underage person alcohol without checking. And Mr. Sharma indicated that Tracy had just started working at his business yesterday and was not tip certified. Uh, Mr. Sharma was cooperative and provided us with the information that we had asked for when, when, uh, when asked. That's essentially the facts of the, uh, the check on that establishment.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have a question for Detective O'Rourke? Sir, if you don't mind just introducing yourself, tell us where you live?
I'm Garav Sharma. I live in Worcester. I've been operating businesses in this town for two years, and I've been in the restaurant industry since two thousand one, and this would be my first ever violation in my, any of my establishments, and for that, I regret and apologize to the select board and to the chief and to the town, because we should all be aware not to serve underage people. Uh, but as the incident happened, uh, I made sure that person was tip certified right away. I have her tip certification on my cellphone. I made her make sure that she does take it. Um, that's, and, uh, we, I don't, any of my establishments that I ever owned never had a violation of the liquor license through ABC or Tom or the city staying operations.
So, was the, um, the individual that served, was she, uh, sent home that evening?
Well, no, I, I knew the procedure that the officers are gonna come back to talk to her, so she wanted to go home, so I said, no, I need you to answer whatever the officers have to ask you, 'cause I cannot, if be here, say what she said or not. So I asked to stay behind till they come back to let us know that what happened.
But of course, you didn't allow her to serve anymore?
No, I was there, I was there the time, but it, I, I had just gone to the kitchen, and that's when it just happened, in between a split second, yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Chief?
You, you wanna close the public hearing first, or?
Well, I'd, I'd actually like to hear the, um, the recommendation and then close.
Alright, recommendation be the same. As far as our records are concerned, we have no, uh, uh, other violations, uh, of, of note. Uh, however, also, I don't have any copies of any tip certifications from any employees from, uh, Pub one twenty-two. Recommendation would be one day, I mean, excuse me, uh, written warning by the board and, uh, mandatory tip certification for all employees. Uh, certification be dated after the, uh, compliance check was done, after the twenty-fourth of May, uh, in a classroom setting, once again, and, uh, certification be turned in by, within thirty days, or fail to do so would constitute a separate violation.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Well, one second, I just, um, is there any member of the public here to speak on behalf of this particular situation? Okay, now, see.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, just one thing to say, this is the second one tonight where the individual that was at the bar was not, or serving, was, uh, not tip certified, and the second time that, uh, we had an establishment without any tip certifications on record with the police department. Um, I guess we can get through this, but we have to have a quick discussion after, um, we have the, a recommendation and a motion to approve the recommendation, which I guess is the same as, um, reunion tap-in table?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we'll entertain a motion. Alright, well anyways.
You can do it. You want me to do it?
You had it all written down nicely done. I didn't take any notes on that.
I move the board vote to accept the recommendation of Chief Crepo for a written warning, um, and require all employees to retake the tips, uh, training classes within thirty days.
Second. Any discussion? This is just sending it to the chief within thirty days?
Yes, like I said, when we applied for the liquor license, we did send out the tip certifications, so I can resend all of those again, just to-
Well, you're gonna have to go through a classroom setting anyways. Well, well, you may in about twelve seconds, we'll see. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, hearing none? Yeah, you, everybody will have to get re-tip certified in a classroom setting and then submit those results to the chief.
Even the person who took it right after the incident?
Every person.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, every person.
Can do that, not, not a problem.
Uh, thank you, Detective O'Rourke. Thank you, chief.
If I may take a minute of your time as, as an aside, uh, I just wanna recognize, uh, Sergeant O'Rourke, he just completed DRE training, which is drug recognition expert. He's the first one in the history of the police, the Grafton Police Department, uh, and the DRE training is, uh, three weeks of training. The, the last week, um, he had to go out to Arizona, Maricopa County, in the jail, basically, almost lived there for a week, right?
Yes.
Uh, doing, uh, drug testing, uh, through visualization and other, uh, um, observations, uh, to get his certification. It's not an easy course. Several officers, from what I understand, did not pass the course.
Correct.
Uh, and, uh, actually were flown back early. But this was done through a grant, and it was done, uh, grant money from the state in light of, uh, the new marijuana laws that are coming out and allow it's hard to spot, uh, impaired driving under marijuana and other drugs. Those, but Sergeant O'Rourke took the class, uh, and this was not a gimme class, this was a very difficult class. I just wanna congratulate him and recognize his accomplishment for that.
Thank you.
Great work, Sergeant.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you, chief.
Thank you.
So, now that those have been concluded, I just have, so when, the process, when they get the, um, the liquor license, they send all their tip certifications, they come to the chief, or they come to your office?
When they make initial application, they'll be part of the application process.
Okay. And those two particular situations for reunion and for, um, one twenty-two, you didn't have any record?
I didn't have anything, no.
We may, we, we may not have forwarded them to you, because there'd be no necessary matter for you to have them until you have an enforcement, so we could have them housed in the office, and I just don't know it.
Okay.
If I may add to that, would you just let the note prescribe a way in which you want them delivered, so you have a copy of them on record, uh, you know, at the station? Or you just wanna be able to come to the town?
Like Tim mentioned, when we, uh, I didn't, you know, I didn't check to see what we had up here. I checked what I had. I do have some of the newer licenses that, you know, I, I guess some people send them both ways. Uh, these particular establishments probably sent it, uh, to town, or if they did, you know, I don't know. Uh, but, uh, however, I wanna work it-
Yeah, 'cause there's new ones, there's renewals. Renewals, you don't usually make the request. When you do the renewal, you just say, you're approved, you don't ask for anything in particular. So we might wanna add that to the-
Okay, and that's kinda where I'm getting at. So if, uh, of two out of the three here, we had, you know, we go through the renewal process pretty quickly as we get to the end of the year and everything gets turned over. Perhaps we should take a look at, you know, a policy that we set, uh, before we renew, we make sure that no new employees are working in establishments in towns we extend liquor license to as a town, um, without, uh, making sure that everybody working there is tip certified.
If I may?
Of course.
I would, I would probably recommend that when they do renew, that they, they, they have to submit the tips right away, whether asked for or not. They have to submit it, so we don't have to go looking, rather than having the town or myself go back in our files to see what's, what's still active, because they do have a, uh, expiration date on them. So, probably, might be a good practice to just have them, when you turn in your license application, every year, you turn in, uh, your tips certifications for all employees.
Yeah. And overall, that's not a difficult process?
No.
The classroom setting is more robust as far as-
Exactly.
Curriculum, so to speak, but, okay.
Yes, there's a three-year expiration on the tips, um, certifications, so it should be, at, at the renewal process, you can bring those in-
Okay.
For the existing employees, and then you can probably, as you hire new ones, and just bring those to keep it updated.
That's a good idea.
Great. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Becky, can you just make a note when we have, uh, the next-
I already have it.
Liquor license and now we get to- That business is done. Um, so we have, um, a continued discussion from, uh, last week, which I believe we have people in the, uh, the audience to, uh, that are interested parties. Um, we had a discussion on the, uh, medical reserve corps. We, um, extended the discussion piece to tonight, um, have Tim provide us with some recommendations for review, give, uh, all the rest of the, the board members some time to digest the material that we got last week, and of course, the week before at the Board of Health. Um, I wanna keep the discussion between us for just the opening pieces of it, um, and if we need to extend some time to get into the public, we most certainly will, especially then people are, are here for this matter, I, at least I assume. I see a lot of the same faces as I saw last week. I'll bet you a few, few less. Um, does anybody wanna take us, lead us? Any concerns? We got everything from Tim in our packet.
I have a concern. Um, and this sort of goes a little bit above and beyond just the- sort of goes a little bit above and beyond just the MRC. And my concern is this, last October, we were asked, this Board was asked to sign a contract between the Town and the contractor for the MRC, Lindsay Fox. And the contract was pretty detailed about what Lindsay's role was going to be, how she was paid, the definitions of the terms of the contract, termination clauses of the contract, and how, if at all, the contract was to be amended. We've come to find out that since we signed the contract and even a little bit before, the terms that the Town and Lindsay were operating under were a little bit different than the Town, than the terms that this Board entered into. For instance, my copy that I pulled up off her packet that I was sent says in paragraph number two that the contract price to be paid to the contractor by the Town is twenty-five fifty per hour, not to exceed thirty-six thousand nine sixty-eight for the total contract here. It turns out that that wasn't the upper, that wasn't the understanding between the parties. The understanding was that she wasn't going to be paid by the hour, she was going to be paid a flat fee quarterly, okay? And that understanding actually came about before the contract was signed. So knowing this, knowing that the parties had agreed that she was gonna be paid quarterly, it appears that we signed a contract or were at least presented with a contract that says twenty-five fifty an hour. Um, I don't have any other contract, unless I'm mistaken, and I could be, that says she was gonna be paid quarterly. So, paragraph twenty-three says, this is the waiver and amendment clause. Amendments or waivers of any additional term, condition, covenant, duty, or obligation contained in this contract may be made only by written amendment executed by the signatories to the original agreement. And I don't, again, recall, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, ever signing an amended agreement. And it seems to me that the genesis of the dispute here is whether the contractor is presenting her deliverables in a fashion that allows the Town to draw upon the grant money we received to pay her. Um, and it's difficult if the grant authority decides, well, we're not going to pay somebody unless they are detailed in the tasks that they perform to qualify for the money under the grant. So, in other words, whether or not the, the, the deliverables are detailed enough such that she'll be paid, it's, it's difficult to do that if they're expecting sort of an hourly breakout of what she's doing, as opposed to these quarterly invoices that she had been submitting, which was the understanding between the parties. So, right off the bat, um, you know, this was something that should have been brought to our attention, it wasn't. So, it, can you guys address that, like, how did we end up with a contract that says twenty-five fifty an hour, but, and, but a contractor expects to be paid quarterly?
The invoice is submitted quarterly to the, the, the City of Worcester for reimbursables. So, once, based on the deliverables that are met every quarter, they'll be submitted, and once that reimbursement is gotten, she'll be paid.
Okay, so, is FEP, it's, again, my understanding that, that part of the problem is FEP is pushing back a little bit on reimbursing because she's not delivering the, the detail of the receivables, sort of broken down by the hour.
There are, there are a number of issues with the submittals of invoices that we're paling away a layer of an onion as we go through this process. Last week, I was asked to provide two options relative to keeping the MRC in Grafton, and that's what I was preparing to do, not, you know, litigate the terms and conditions of the contract.
Well, yeah, except that, um, he- here again, this is, you know, this is a document that's binding on us, you know, when, when I sign a contract, I expect that both parties are gonna be honoring the contract that I've entered into, I don't expect that I'm gonna be signing a fiction, and I certainly don't expect that we're going to ignore terms of the contract like waiver and amendment. So why, why were we presented with a contract that says twenty-five fifty an hour if everybody expected that she was gonna be paid quarterly?
Because she'd be paid quarterly, but you need to break it down for the state invoices on an hourly basis.
Okay.
So the hours just have to match in the invoice to be reimbursed. Now, when that detail comes out with some of the pieces of both MRC and FEP funding, which are two separate grants, if they're not part of the deliverable, it's difficult to get them to reimburse you.
Okay.
And that's fundamentally the problem we're having with the submittals.
So, it's your contention that it wasn't a flat fee paid quarterly, but rather hourly? She was gonna be paid quarterly, but measuring it by the hour?
Based on the deliverable, and she'd quantify the hours to provide those deliverables.
Okay, did she provide, did she provide, uh, invoices to you by the quarter?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay, and for the first, how many quarters was she paid?
Six as of now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done this six times.
And when did we start not paying her, how many quarters has she owed now, two?
Two.
Okay, were there, was there any material difference between the invoices that she was submitting that were paid and the ones that weren't?
Uh, some of them, yes, I mean, we, we haven't done a forensic on the ones that were paid versus the ones that weren't, but there are two with us right now that are submittal that we know that the state, from the conversation we had today, would not be considered reimbursable.
Okay, and what was the problem specifically because of, do we know?
Uh, they deal with scope of the deliverable.
What does that mean?
The MRC is tasked with attracting, retaining, training volunteers and deploying those volunteers in an emergency, those are the basics.
Mm-hmm.
So to do that, you have deliverables under each one of those. To hold a vaping class or to hold a CPR class for learning disabled kids and their parents, great things, we should do those. And the Board of Health, in conjunction with the Alliance, does do those things. But that's above and beyond recruiting, training, and deploying volunteers. So when the state looks at that, they say, well, that's really not part of the deliverable, therefore, we're not going to reimburse you.
Would you say the state, do you mean MRC or do you mean FEP?
Uh, MRC and/or FEP.
Both, the guidelines for both.
Yeah, the Grant's Manual is very clear, it's a lengthy document. There's been complaints that it gets updated all the time, but we talked to the state today, it's been updated once. And it's about providing food for volunteers, that's one thing you can't do, has a major change inside the Grant's Manual.
Okay, cause I've got a copy of invoice that she submitted on March twenty-eighth. Quarterly cost of services, ninety-two forty-two, twenty-five percent of FY nineteen salary. And this is outputs, quarterly reports, HHS activity log, email four nineteen, DPH, Regina Villa report, email four nineteen, HMCC Q three, MRC invoice for Worcester, email four twenty, then it goes down quarterly drill, training slash volunteer opportunities, emergency dispensing site drills, Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce Expo, vape education. So, while there may be, uh, some things in here that she's not getting reimbursed for, I'm, I'm just wondering where sort of the breakdown is, is it because she did work that you say isn't reimbursable? Or is it because she hasn't sufficiently detailed it yet?
It's probably a combination of both, but it's probably above and beyond the scope of, you know, getting volunteers, training them, retaining them, and deploying them.
And to be clear, Tim and I don't get to decide what is and is not accepted, it goes to the state and the state kicks it back and says, actually, this is not within the scope, you gotta take it off the invoice, we can't reimburse you.
So, and this is, this is sort of gets to the heart of what I'm wondering here, is this a deliverables issue? Or is this an administrative issue where, which, because it appears to me, just by looking at this stuff and looking at what I've read and s- and seen so far and heard, that had she understood that she was to detail her time by the hour all along, that we might not be running into an issue with FEP about breaking down a little bit more, getting more detail about what, what it is she's doing to qualify for the money. And I understand their position because you just can't be giving out grant money willy-nilly to anybody who asks for it. Or is this an issue where we've got a contractor who just isn't doing their job and wants to do vape education classes when they should be doing something else? And it seems to me from everybody that I've spoke to, that I've spoken to, um, that she's doing a fantastic job. Our mission here with this ought to be to retain the best contractors that we can, who are doing a good job. If there are issues dealing with the grant awarding authority about the administration, administrative piece, I would hope that our first response to that would just be to work through the situation and, and figure out where we've gone wrong in the last two quarters versus the previous six. So that's sort of where, where my focus is, just trying to figure that out.
Do you want a particular response to your question now? Does anybody else have any comments, questions? Reading through the two recommendations that were given and understanding what we spoke about last week as well. You know, why don't I start over here, Dorine?
Okay. So, so I think this is a important conversation to have because, you know, Ed, with all due respect, I hear your points and I a hundred percent agree that if the Board is signing a contract, that we should be holding that contract in place. But it was also my understanding that the Board of Health has asked the Select Board to make a decision on whether or not to keep MRC in the Town of Grafton as the host community, not to necessarily decide, um, you know, who's, who's doing the position. In my opinion, that decision is not for the Select Board to make, that is for the administration to make. And so I'm prepared to talk about the recommendations moving forward, and it's, I, I don't think it's the Select Board's decision to discuss the details of Lindsay's contract. If, if that's a discussion that we need to have off record and give our opinion to Tim and Becca, I think that's fine, but I, I don't think it was the request of the Board of Health to say, let's talk about Lindsay's contract. My understanding was, are we going to host MRC? It was clearly discussed that unanimously, we wanted to keep MRC in Town, and then what are those recommendations to keep us as a host community? Again, I'm not disagreeing with you with the details of the contract, but that's my opinion.
No, I just, I just read the, I just read the, the recommendations here, I mean, I, I don't consider us beholden to two recommendations that I found in my packet. I mean, the first option is to allow existing staff member to take on the duties and responsibilities of the grant. My opinion is we have somebody who's taking on the duties and responsibilities of the grant, if it needs to be administered better, I would prefer to do it that way. Whether or not we, as Grafton, maintain as a host community, I mean, I've heard from people saying that, no, we shouldn't. Um, that somebody else from the sixteen should and that we should, you know, I think it was the Board of Health's recommendation, we take some time to figure that part out and see if there's anybody else out there who wanted to do it. I don't see any benefit to giving it up entirely and becoming part of Worcester, I, I, no one's explained to me how that's better for, for Grafton. Um, I, the, the number of volunteers issue doesn't do it for me, simply because of the, the numbers of served people involved and or constituents involved. The second, second option, to be create a new position for general grant administration. I agree that there should be a new position for general grant administration created, per- perhaps to avoid this issue to begin with. But, I'm not sure that that has, has much to do with the MRC, cause again, there are two issues, there's the person who's administering it and doing it a job, and then there's, from our, from our end, the administrative end and dealing with this and understanding it and understanding what the needs of, of the MRC are, of what FEP are, and for all the other grants that are coming down the road, and, you know, for, for people in the audience and people watching at home, you're looking at the future of, of Town government because we only have so much money, and now we're encouraging Tim and Becca to go out and find more money in the form of grants, they've got to administer them, these things happen, and now we're talking about hiring somebody else just to, to do that, and I don't, I don't know where we would get that money from to hire somebody to.
Yeah, we've never had the money, so the proposals have never been made until now.
Right.
You, when you aggregated electricity, you, you voted for an adder, that, I think bef- maybe before you had, certainly before Peter and Dorine. So there's, there's a, there's a one, point zero zero one percent per kilowatt, which would yield maybe fifty-one thousand over a fiscal year. Green Communities was successful in the competitive round last year, we get up to ten percent of that, and then next year for all the LED lights is another ten percent of whatever that total is for grant administration. And then there's MVP, Mass Works, there are, uh, we're doing those now, but it would be nice to have them consolidated and not miss any either. So that was my, kind of my first pitch, was to look at that position description, the, the problem we have is timing, right? July one comes, we've already submitted for the next grant for our MRC, which we wanna get funded. The goal was to keep it as a community greater Grafton, and I think the second recommendation to have, uh, Mary Ann take that role over, both administratively and function, is, is a perfect blend for me because it's so close to public safety, it's so close to emergency management, so at the Board of Health, there's certainly, um, consistency having it in-house under the Police Department, to do the day-to-day and maintain the credentialing of those volunteers, making sure they go to the, the quarterly drills and attending the, the, the twice-a-year annual meeting at DPH. That clearly, we talked to the state today and they think that that's a better model anyways. And, you know, quite frankly, April, we, we started to, to look at the processes and the output as being an issue. The contract calls for a seven-day notice to terminate. If I had done that then, I would have been, well, Becca and a lot of other people would have been triaging to get us to June. So, obviously, when I sent out the email on May thirteenth to say, hey, I'm gonna move away from this model, and we talked to people. You know, we didn't talk to the constituents, we didn't talk to people who are here last week, I didn't know they existed. Certainly, all the things that they wanna do are all good and important things, we can provide those things, but just not through the MRC coordinating.
As I'm moving down the table, I'm just giving myself the time being, Mr. Crowell.
Yeah, just a technical question, uh, within the contract that we signed last October, who's the terminating authority? We're the, we're the contracting authority on the Board of Selectmen, but who authorizes the termination within seven days?
To rescind it? To, to terminate the contract? I, I think it would be the Town Administrator for the day-to-day administration.
I, I, yeah, it comes back to a point of, uh, what, uh, Mr. Fazio had said a few moments ago, about, you know, if it's our contract, it's our contract, this is a ten ninety-nine, this is not a W two employee, so this person currently, you know, with the way this contract is written, you know, falls really kind of outside of the norms of, I think, of day-to-day management, because basically, you're just managing outcomes at this point when you're ten ninety-nine somebody. Similar, if you bring in special counsel or, uh, a special contractor, that really kind of falls outside of the day-to-day activities. But I think if that answers my question, then my, you know, you brought up a good point, Dorine, about, you know, I don't know who manages this on the day-to-day side of things, but if it's our contract, I would believe that that decision ultimately falls under the people who signed the contract.
And the contract's pretty clear about that.
To term, but to let it expire.
To let it, I mean, the Town of Grafton, the contract has been in the Town of Grafton and this contractor, Town of Grafton has us under the signatory line. You know, the, it makes very clear, even for amendment, that it's the parties to the contract who are signatories, who are gonna make these decisions. There's nothing in here, um, you know, whether or not we have you do it is, that's our, our determination here and, and our decision, but we should make this clear, um, because, you know, you mentioned a moment ago, you, you didn't reach out to, to the people here, but we didn't have this conversation either, until after May thirteenth. So, I, I mean, this is something we've gotta, we've gotta wrap our arms around as far as who's making these decisions and when.
Did you have anything further?
I have a lot of things further, but I probably don't have enough time to go through them, just because the particulars of the contract, to me, I stick by what's in the terms, that's it. And I follow whatever with those guidelines, so if there are things that are, are within our control, I need to know better, how is that defined? Because if you decide on one of the options that you're gonna have a W two employee, you know, take over the responsibilities of the grant, I also have some concerns there as well, uh, whereas, you know, is she a union employee and you're gonna have someone do non-union specific tasks?
She's not a union.
She's not, so there's that. The other piece of it is if you pay in addition money to the grant, how does that hit our retirement and so on and so forth? So, are you offsetting her annual salary, or is she getting this, you know, would this person be getting this in addition to what their annual salary is?
Yeah, it'll be a stipend for the additional duties.
All right, so, and this person's never done it before.
She's a volunteer right now.
Yeah, well, she's with the MRC, but I mean, you remember, she's the Police Chief Secretary who runs all the quarry checks for all of the gun permits. She administers most of the paperwork for the grants.
She here tonight?
Mary Ann, no.
And like I said, I got a lot more questions, Bruce, but.
Well, now, I guess we can, as soon as I'm moving down the table, Jen, do you have anything?
Oh, I think that option is great, Mary Ann is fantastic, I think it's a contract that, um, if we had any other contract in which the contractor wasn't delivering the deliverables in the contract, we. the deliverables in the contract, we wouldn't continue that contract.
So are the deliverables not being met? Because I thought we made this abundantly clear last week that the deliverables were being met. I mean, didn't you, you went through?
There, there are issues, obviously, as I articulated, that with the deliverables and, and asking it through the invoicing process, that we, the, the scope has creeped a little bit and to, in terms of recruiting, training, deploying if necessary for an emergency, we've gone way beyond that.
So we've gone way beyond the deliverables, so that's a different, so Jen's saying that if we have contractors that we sign into an agreement with and.
Well, she wants to get paid for stuff that are outside the scope of her.
Which you will not be reimbursed for.
Well, yeah, but the, the grant runners are going to determine whether that's the case or not.
And if I can't get the money from the grant, where do I get the money from?
Then it doesn't.
And I, I mean, I, I want this to be a gracious departure, not a contentious one, we just let it expire.
We are not the authority over what can and cannot be reimbursed. So if a contractor is doing tasks that are outside of scope and then the authority, whether it be Worcester or Boston or federal government determines that, you know, this is really outside of the scope of this grant, then the contractor, you know, like any other general contractor, has to eat that cost. And that was, you know, an error of omission on their part. I don't make that decision, but I believe that in most contract situations that I've been involved with, if there are errors or omissions, then the contractor is the one that eats the cost, not the town. So you, I don't see how or where the liability would exist that town funds would have to pay for the services if it fell outside of that scope.
We certainly don't want to have any liability outstanding if someone's even going to threaten litigation relative to that. So that's why having an internal employee do the work is far superior than having a contractor do it.
But I believe that the litigation would be with the authority, not with the town. The town doesn't determine, you just told us that, the town doesn't determine whether or not, if something creeps outside of the deliverables, if it meets and gets reimbursed. That is completely up to the authority, not you. So you're, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, yeah, we might get named in some sort of suit, but I'm sure we're not the ones that are going to be held liable for this. Because if, if the appointing authority who's overstep oversees your guys administratively, I don't know how someone is not needing the deliverables, that's just working outside of the scope, asking to be reimbursed for something that wasn't part of the original scope.
And when we got to the point where we were exceeding our deliverables and the first time the invoice came through, that was outside the scope, I assume we got that back and then we had a submitter for the second time that was also rejected. What during that process, was that identified, was that brought to the attention of?
There's been numerous conversations with the state and the city of Worcester with the contractor. I'm not just doing this because I don't like the color of the car the woman drives. This is a service model that we need to provide.
Yeah, so it's just weird because it's a juxtaposition from what, all the comments we've had in the past and then at the Board of Health meeting before it, that's saying that, that we are delivering something that's a, that's a a good quality product. And then I'm hearing here that it's not, so who, who do I believe?
That's up to you.
All right, so I mean, that's kind of why we're here. I'm just seeing it's, it's starting to become more of a, a fissure between the two particular pieces. So for six invoice periods, so to speak, it was okay. And then it started to send after, on the seventh and then the eighth.
There were, there were questions that administratively that we spent time on during those first six quarters. So those things just cannot be mitigated and ignored. So I'm self-reporting that there is a better way to provide this service. And I could have, we, we could have terminated early and that would have just led to more pain and strife on our part. On the thirteenth, we had other options, we didn't have a chance to talk about it, so I met with the Board of Health on June fourth. They made it clear they wanted to keep the greater Grafton MRC in Grafton. You charged me with that last week and I have two options for you to consider, one of which is not, you know, re-upping the contract with the contract.
Just to be clear, just, we ask for recommendations, but the recommend, what we actually decide on has to come from this body, if I'm reading this correctly, so.
Well, you, you decide what to provide, but the administration under the charter just defines how to provide. So the charter is pretty clear on that particular piece.
As I read through this invoice that she submitted on March twenty-eighth, what, what about this invoice is outside the scope of her work? She submitted quarterly reports that were emailed to you guys in April of twenty nineteen. Quarterly drill, unit-specific drill, January seventeenth, Oxbridge EDS drill, number two, March nine, Grafton EDS drill. Standby drill, none needed, MDPH drill, optional, completed March twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. Training volunteer opportunities, emergency dispensing site drills, Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce Expo, maybe that. Vape education, you've brought that up, but that's one bullet point. MA responds, MDPH Q-three call-down drill. I mean, so even if it were a couple of things like the, the Chamber of Commerce Expo and the vape education, arguably, that's still a lot of other things that seem to me to fall into the scope of what she does. I'm just not sure, from what I'm hearing, I, I, I still don't understand where the breakdown is and why we have to so radically move away from something that the community appreciates and seems to need and, you know, have somebody in the police department who's never done it before, who isn't here, well, I've never met, to, to take over. I, I, I'm not seeing it, but that's just me. Doreen?
Thank you. I don't think that's our role and I, I'm, I want to clarify my position on this. So I, I don't have anything against Lindsay at all, I don't know Lindsay at all. And I work at it in a town manager's office. And so to sit on this board in my hometown and also go to work every day in a town, in a town manager's office, to me, there's a line between what our responsibilities are here and what the town administrators' recommendations are. And what Tim said is part of the charter, I believe to be true, that we have an obligation to say, MRC is staying in the community. You know, why isn't this working? The details of why it's not working in town is not for us to figure out. And so it's, to me, it's not about whether or not I want Lindsay to stay in the position because that's not my decision to make. And so, you know, again, I have nothing bad to say her, about her or good to say about her because I don't believe it's my position to say anything. If I was working as a town manager in my day job or, you know, working in the town administrator's office, that would be my job to hone in on that. So I, I just kind of go with, these are the recommendations that we have asked this office to provide for us. We made a decision to keep MRC in town based on the board's request, Board of Health's request. And he came up with two decisions. If, if we want to talk about who's going to be in the position in more detail, I, I don't think personally, my vote is, I don't think that's a decision that the board should be making. That's not our role.
All right, in other towns, we spoke about this last week. Karen, in other towns, if you don't mind coming up, just, just to respond to this particular question. In other towns and communities, their representatives, the MRC, the coordinator position, et cetera, et cetera. You mentioned last week that typically the Board of Health has a role there.
Yeah, for the state and Fed to even recognize an MRC unit, you need, in a town to be part of it, you need the Board of Health and/or the Health Department from that town blessing.
An individual that gets hired to fill the role?
For the town to even join. For an individual to be a unit coordinator, you can even have a unit be a five oh one three C and everything like.
Just stay up there for a second if you don't mind. Okay, so I see what you're saying, Doreen.
Yeah.
All right, I understand day-to-day operations. I've been doing this for a little while, but there are very few particular items or particular people that we hire as we go with the affirmation process, which we just did tonight, that are bound by a contract that we actually execute. And if I'm looking at that correctly, that's a contract between the executive authority and an individual to, you know, participate in that role. It's different than anything else we do in this, in this matter.
It's tricky.
I would say that we could exercise a far more amount of control over who gets hired and who gets fired if I'm going to sign my name to a particular person that I'm giving, granting authority to. Day-to-day operations is going to be Tim, I get that, but that's inside this contract. As far as the parameters of the contract, those are set by us. We don't do that with anybody else. Now, I may be wrong and I may be away in that particular piece, but I take the things that we have privilege over to be our role. And we would never go in after we exercise this contract and tell Tim, hey, she should be doing this or she should be doing that. That's where that line for me is drawn. But I do completely get where you're talking about. The Board of Health is appointed by, by us, you don't have authority to bind into a contract on the town's behalf anyways. So when we did this original contract, was the Board of Health included?
We interviewed for the position and provided a recommendation.
Okay.
And that was it. That's why I mentioned last week, I didn't see.
In past practice, that's what we did. So we didn't give a carte blanche decision to any particular one person. And I'm sorry that I'm a risk, but I'm pretty sure I signed into this contract. So I was part of this particular decision-making process. So if we're going to take a recommendation and look for another particular individual, if the discussion goes in that direction, I feel it's only fair that we go back to the Board of Health for review of it, seeing that that's what we did the last time. And their expertise in this particular thing far exceeds mine. I don't know about anybody else on here, but I would certainly take into account their recommendation on it. I mean, that's what we did originally.
Well, they, they did, but the, the, under the charter, the town administrator makes a recommendation to the board for any, even legal counsel, for example, you actually contract on an annual basis.
Yep.
You can make that change, you could re-award it. But in this case, it's not a re-award because it's not a presentation of a, of a re-award for the position.
Saying all new.
No, I disagree. You made the recommendation not to renew. Your recommendation not to renew.
The contract expires, it has a date that the board's.
Your words were specific at the Board of Health and here, so I, I want to, I want to get, you know, to the point of, you made the recommendation not to renew the contract, not, I've decided, right? That was the words. So I think in fairness, going to Bruce's point, that getting the Board of Health's input and just going through the same process that we've gone before, that way it's a known entity, we know what has to happen, I think speaks volumes to even evaluating these other options.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I see your point. I disagree with it, but I can understand it. And I just wanted to bring up one more thing, that the second option to create a new position for a general grant administration, that's something that we can even talk about separately, even not at this meeting. So in the work that I do in Sutton, I was aware of all these, all this funding sources that we had through DPU for our aggregation plan and the fact that we could source a separate grant administrator as well. And, you know, this doesn't necessarily have to be one in the same conversation as well. So, you know, maybe we, we can even table that and, and talk about it at a later time because if the funding is there, if we choose to put MRC as part of that position, again, I don't think that that's necessarily in our scope. That would be the roles and responsibilities of the town administrator's office. But if the funding's there, that would, that could be a separate conversation.
I, I would, I would agree. Even if we disagree in this particular manner, I, I, somebody, and we've talked about this several times in the past, every time a grant is brought up, how much more we can do, be doing to find additional grants across the broad spectrum of the municipality, you know, police, fire, you name it. There's a lot of money out there that can be collected that we may not be tapping now, but we know that. Whether it's a whole new position or not, I mean, that's a whole nother discussion. Does anybody have any more? Now, I know, Karen, you can't speak for your, your board. I did watch, of course, I did attend the meeting that you had. If we were to, to come up with a range of options on what the direction of the board would be, and of course, you would want to take a role in who's actually administering it, who's doing the functional work of the MRC.
Yes, because I mean, obviously, yes, we care about the grant work and all of the administrative piece, but obviously, we care most about the town, the safety of the town, health, et cetera. And that's mine, when I saw the recommendations, ultimately, you know, what we've been getting for deliverables and the work that's been happening on, you know, already is great. But ultimately, taking everything else aside, my biggest concern, and this is my personal concern, not as speaking for the whole board, obviously, because they're not all here, is that whoever and however this gets managed, my biggest concerns are that it's someone who has familiarity with public health, safety and/or emergency management and kind of that passion and drive for that. Because otherwise, you will not drum up the volunteers and you will lose them.
All right, does anybody have any questions? I did mention last week if we were going to pick this up again and have a substantive talk on the recommendations that were provided by Tim and then some of the subject material that we brought up as a board, that I would open it up for some public comment on what we've discussed. So if there is anybody, other members of Board of Health, they're here, Lindsay is here, Representative Meridian is here. Now's the time, so Karen, if you don't mind giving up the podium, unless you have anything more to say?
Nope, that's it, thank you very much.
No, I'd like to set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I'd like to set a couple of ground rules. I really don't want to have a tit-for-tat or an argument with administration or us in particular. We really just want to make sure we have all the material we need to have a good, solid decision and we have an actionable item that we can bring forth at a meeting to actually execute a path forward and vote on a path forward. So, Mr. Meridian?
Mr. Chairman, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
David Meridian, eight North Street. I want to wear two hats tonight, I'm going to wear a state representative and Grafton citizen. On the state representative side, I think I can say pretty clearly in talking with all three of my communities that they don't want to lose this to Worcester. I just want to be on the record with saying that. And taking my hat off and putting on the constituent hat, I think it means a lot to keep it in Grafton. I really do. If there is an emergency, if anything was to happen, I do think it being local, there's a sense of pride in taking care of your community. I'm not sitting here saying that other communities won't respond, but I do think that there's certainly something to be said for that. On a much more personal level, a couple of years ago, I provided the community with an opportunity to have a CPR training day. I worked with our Board of Health and I specifically worked with Lindsay on that capacity. She was outstanding. Any issues I had, any questions, comments or concerns were certainly fulfilled. But I just thought I'd be remiss if I didn't come up here and at least give you the feedback from all of the towns with the fact that they love having a little bit more of the tight-knit valley community, if you will, as opposed to being absorbed by Worcester. And obviously, I wanted to have my concerns echoed as a citizen as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else out there? Please.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Fox, twenty-one Oak Street. And, you know, I think there's a key component that y'all have mentioned and I just want to echo and that is the fact that in terms of administering the grant, that's one thing. In terms of actually implementing it, being the person on the front line who's doing the work, that's a different ballgame. So I actually love the idea of having someone that can help manage multiple grants, I think that's great. But at the end of the day, I think that it's really important to have a really true understanding of what the mission of MRC is on a federal level, on a state, local, state and local level. And for us, that means really getting to know who you're working with, who your community partners are, being available outside of standard business hours and just being engaged so that those people feel comfortable coming to you or knowing that you're a trusted leader to go to in a state of emergency. So something that we've managed to accomplish just in general is creating more than seventy-five community partners in terms of faith-based communities. And do you know, whenever there's an emergency, those people and those churches, they know each other, they care about each other and they will be the first people there to say, hey, we're here to help. We know you, we know MRC. Big initiative that we had with even Jamie Terry, she's an emergency planner in Central Mass. She has actually been working with them to provide the education and train them, just faith-based communities on how to set up emergency dispensing sites. So whoever is going to have this position, are they going to have the autonomy, creativity and the abilities to go out beyond that scope of work of administering the finances of a grant? When we're talking about twenty thousand dollars or thirty or whatever it is, maybe you get more grants and it's more. You know, you really have to do a cost-benefit analysis whenever you look at that. And I just want to state for the record, as we talk about deliverables, we, the, the base funding that we're operating off of is, it, it states you have to have four minimum training. is, it, it states you have to have four minimum trainings that meet the core competencies of the MRC. So four, that's it. And in terms of meeting grant deliverables, I can show you this document here from Massachusetts Department of Public Health. April seventeenth, two thousand nine, they said that we have met all of our deliverables.
Two thousand nineteen.
Oh, excuse me, ten years off, guys, sorry. But two thousand nineteen, yeah. So it says here that, yes, 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 we've checked off all of our marks in terms of meeting our deliverables. This update was given to us by Liz Foley from the state, April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. So with that said, I understand why Tim's saying vape education, what does that have to do with emergency preparedness? But you have to go back to the core and the mission of MRC. We are a federal program through Health and Human Services. We are run through public health departments, and it's a public health entity. CERT is the public safety entity for volunteer responders. So it's an understandable concept to think like, okay, we have this grant that focuses on emergency preparedness, which is great, but MRC is more than just emergency preparedness. So that's something I just want to highlight. And so as, in terms of grant deliverables and the four minimum training requirements, we did four trainings just in terms of educating children on personal preparedness and first aid. Preschoolers and middle schoolers throughout Douglas and Northbridge, just this, in two thousand nineteen. We did four of those trainings. So those four trainings alone meet those deliverables. Not to mention, I know that you mentioned CPR training. That CPR training was approved by the state as meeting deliverables. So I would like to put that on the record, that that was not something beyond the scope of anything. It was approved by the state, including funding it. So we, it's something that we're mindful of. We look at our funds. And, and because, you know, there have been some things that have been incorrectly submitted to the grant, not by myself, but because of the incorrect submissions for the grant, the funds have not been released. And therefore, we have not had that money to spend towards trainings. So fortunately, due to the community outreach, we've been able to solicit, or I don't know if that's right word choice, but have those community partners come out and say, hey, we'll do free trainings for you, no problem. So it's more than just the administrating of a grant and the finances. It's about building a community and breaking down these silos that exist across Blackstone Valley.
Lindsay, can I stop for one second?
Yep.
Do you feel that the program over the last few quarters, last few months, et cetera, has, has grown? Have you seen more input from the communities that have been involved in us? I mean, sixteen communities is, seems to be a lot, seeing that we started with four, right?
Yeah.
So we have seen growth and development of the services that we're providing as.
Oh, yeah. I mean, just even, even the beginning of this fiscal year, I'd have to look back at like the exact numbers. But I want to say we were at, we got as low as like one eleven, because, you know, people can fluctuate. And right now, we're at one ninety, and then we just accrued another three new applications in the last three days. So this has been good PR for us in some way because people are, are interested, they want to know who we are and how they can help. And something I would encourage every single Board of Health Department, Board of Selectmen, what have you, is to sign up to become a volunteer. If you don't know what I'm doing, get to know it because you'll see what we put out in the community. You just register at maresponse.org. Administration can do that as well. You can monitor, what am I doing? Am I doing my job? Because it's all out there. And so that's something that I would also recommend because it's not hidden. We're very open and transparent to the public. Our Facebook page is also very active and a place that we choose to share that information.
So I have a question for Lindsay.
I just, a quick one. Who's responsibility is it to submit the invoices for reimbursement?
The invoices, so in general, that's a great question because in times past, so, sorry, that caught me off guard. So, and, so whenever MRC was founded in two thousand six, I would say from two thousand six until two thousand seventeen, we've just been doing it ourselves. We've been doing all the financial reporting and the grant administration. So the question becomes, where did the shift happen, right?
I'm just wondering if in your contract, is it, is it your responsibility to submit accurate invoices for reimbursement?
So I can give you my job description. I think that's probably the best, the best way to go from it.
Just to be clear, there's not an official job description that was created to do the advertisement of what those roles and responsibilities were? Contract is what she works under and the deliverables and the federal grant are what's supposed to be.
The contract actually, per the state, should have come with a job description. And because it didn't, the state offered me the MRC Unit Coordinator Scope of Service Guidance. In addition, in terms of the invoices that I submit to the Town of Grafton, I put on there absolutely in terms of producing the invoices that would go to Worcester. But as an independent contractor, I think it's understandable that the liability of, of that aspect, it still falls on the Town of Grafton to submit that invoice. And that's why there are so, so many different like chains, chain of command from contractor to Grafton to Worcester to the state. There's a lot of eyes on them to make sure that everything's being done correctly. One thing I will comment on is that I, I do feel really bad for Becca's position in this because she just got thrown into it. You honest to goodness just got thrown right on into it. It's unfortunate because there's, you know, there's a huge learning curve with all this and the grant manual continues to change year over year. So I know that for quarter one and quarter two, there were definitely some invoicing issues because there were some things that shifted in which the way protocols were in the past, they had shifted and no one advised the Town of Grafton of those changes. So it was sort of like, okay, you do what you know, and then it get kicks back, and then you find out, okay, this is what you need.
But those were in the grants manual.
No, every HMCC operates differently in that sense, so.
But the grants manual for what's submitted is detailed in that document.
We can certainly take that, take a look together, sure.
Oh, no, I'm telling you, it is.
I thought we were avoiding the back and forth.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just.
She, she, certainly, there's a, there's a, a very succinct presentation relative to wanting to secure the position. We talked last, two Thursdays ago about MRC being the goal of keeping it in Grafton and not necessarily about the position. This sounds to me very much like you're advocating for your position.
Honestly, I just wanted to set the record straight because I, I just feel like there has been so much hard work put forth by all of us in MRC, not just me. And it's important to make sure that in terms of what we are putting out in the community, that it's well-understood. And if the Board of Selectmen's going to be making an informed decision, I think that that requires information. I think that it requires more than just numbers.
Thank you. And for, for that perspective, I mean, we are kind of talking about moving away from Lindsay as far as this position is concerned into something else.
The two are kind of hand in hand, aren't they?
They are, most, most certainly are, are one in the same.
And just to be clear, too, there is nothing in this contract about invoicing, in case anybody is wondering. It's good to read things that we signed.
And that, two, thank you. Does anybody have any other comments? All right. Does anybody in the audience have anything further to say? All right, so we've spent a couple of weeks on this, three weeks if you include the Board of Health. I'm willing to take some suggestions on a path forward, so we'll have this on. So we have, July first is when the contract, or expires.
Yeah, June thirty.
June thirtieth. So we have to have a decision made before then on what we're gonna do. Whether we can, is the contract as it stands extendable, or is it something that can be done in that amount of time?
Let's go to the document.
Has to be signed, you'll be your incentive HMCC for approval.
Okay.
No contact of you.
So we're getting it done within the next?
Two weeks.
Yep.
I just think there's a logistical issue for the Board to consider. You can talk to council, consult the Charter, but if the recommendation's not made by the Town Administrator, I don't think you can do it. I mean, that's, that's my opinion, that's my reading. I'm not trying to.
No, that's what it is, that's what it is. I just, you know, we'll have to figure it out.
So we're gonna have to seek that particular recommendation.
Right.
Because I think we are at a, a point, at least from my perspective. And I may be wrong. So what does everybody want to do?
Hold on. Term of contract and time of performance, this contract shall begin on, and I think we backdated it to seven, one, twenty eighteen, and be fully performed by the contractor in accordance with provisions of the contract documents on or before six thirty, twenty nineteen, unless extended in writing at the sole discretion of the town and not subject to assent by the contractor. So that's what it says according to, according to the actual document.
All right, so what does that mean for?
So we can extend it if we want in writing. We take a vote.
It just goes to my point earlier about this is one of those strange situations where it's not extremely clear. But the terms of the contract, when I read it, were very clear that in the signing authority, appointing authority, we are represented as the town in this. Unlike in other employment contracts that when Mr. McInerney engages, he is the person who administers that employment engagement. This is one of those one-offs. And I get, Tim, your point about making recommendations to the Board about what you feel is right. You know, in this situation and given the time, and seeing how we backdated that last contract, guys. You know, if I'm not mistaken, you agreed to sign in October, but you backdated it to July one?
I think that was a requirement of the grant authority that it had to be backdated for the fiscal year. I'm reading some of the emails that I've seen correctly.
So is there any jeopardizing of the grant if we hold off on any formalized decision tonight and we go past July one? Let's say we make a decision mid-July. Does that mean everything stops? Does that mean the grant goes away?
Yeah, because it, it seems to set six thirty, twenty nineteen as the deadline, unless extended.
Not for the grant, but for the contract.
For the contract. Oh, that's true. I keep getting those two things.
Correct, so, yeah, so my point is this, that, you know, in light of us even going forward and saying like, hey, you know, because Board of Health does have a role in this, and, you know, one of my things is I want to know what our other boards want to do. I don't want to make, you know, unilateral decisions without their input. And that, when I was at that meeting on Monday, they were very much in favor of extending. Matter of fact, that was part of the motion that I believe Ms. Sharnard made, in addition to keeping it in Grafton. So there is an interest, in my opinion.
Just say that one more time.
There was a motion made by Ms. Sharnard, seconded and voted all in favor from the Board of Health in summary that they were in favor of extending the existing contract with the existing contractor and keeping MRC in Grafton. But that was only to extend the contract. There was no, excuse me. You know, there was no other guidance, other than that was their wish. But I think it's worth it for us that if we can go beyond July one, if the Board feels it's necessary, if we can, you know, go back. When's your next meeting? In July?
July.
Karen, I'm sorry, but you gotta come up.
No, I, I just needed the administrative date, that's all. She doesn't need to come up and answer.
Come up and answer it on the.
I haven't stood up for a while. It was July eighth is our next scheduled meeting. And the motion was by Deb to not only, you know, recommend keeping the medical reserve court together as the greater Grafton, but to extend the contract for three months.
Contract with, did you say for three months?
Yes.
Three to six months. But that was at that point in time, so I think it's, it's, you know.
What has changed since the meeting two weeks ago?
Nothing. We haven't met since. We meet monthly, so.
Just logistically, there's two other approval processes for the contract before you sign it to state. And it's also reviewed by Worcester before it gets to the state, so they have to approve it ahead of the Board executing it.
Okay.
What's the second piece? Oh, the, the funding for the three months. We just applied for the grant for next fiscal, for the three month. It won't match the grant if it's a three-month extension.
Right.
But there's nothing precluding us from having multiple contractors work within a grant period.
I mean, that's a question for the state, I.
I, I think it's simple. I mean, you have a grant, you have a grant fund. And let's say Contractor A is working three months, and then Contractor A decides that they need to resign due to some unforeseen circumstances. We hire Contractor B a month later to fulfill the rest of the fiscal year. I don't see any.
You're proposing to do a three-month contract.
But, yeah, in other words.
That's not gonna match the, the, the application we just made for a grant for the fiscal year.
So when we applied for the grant for the fiscal year, we said we were gonna have a one-year contract with a.
Subject to renew every year anyways. The, the state and federal look at, oh, maybe not the federal, but federal and state look at the contract that we get.
All right.
Okay, so what were you saying we were gonna do? We were gonna talk to, we were gonna seek input from the Board of Health?
Well, the Board of Health has given us the input of they want to stick with everything as is for the next three months. Now we're finding out that a three-month extension of the contract is not gonna be sufficient.
Therefore, I make the recommendation, we just renew the contract for a year. I mean, logistically, if what I'm understanding, this is, there are some logistical issues that you pointed out that I believe are there, and then they're there. And then I think the, the right solution would be to extend for a year and then see how it goes. And with the Board of Health's input, if they choose or we choose, because it's us that, you know, hey, we want to go in a different direction and maybe look at Tim's options in the future of engaging other people in public safety or so on and so forth, then we do so. But I think if we're under the gun, in that we have to make a decision, then I think the existing contractor that we have in place, absent of the invoicing issues and the logisticals of getting reimbursed, who ultimately decides on who gets reimbursed, why, and so on and so forth, it makes logical sense. We've spent a lot of time discussing this. The deliverables are being met. There's just invoicing issues that I'm understanding. I have no problem with renewing the contract based on the terms of what's been written and signed by the Board of Selectmen.
I agree.
Yeah, you go first.
First of all, I think we need to contact council to see, to get clarification on this matter because I do not agree that it is our decision. The Charter states it is not our decision. Second, we have somebody that administers the day-to-day operation. He knows better than anybody if the contract, if the contractor is fulfilling the obligations of the contract. You're saying that you're disregarding his recommendation because you know better about how the contract's been, been delivered.
That's what they elect us for, Jen.
You, you don't, how do you know? How do you know?
Jen, I'm not.
How do you know how she does her job day-to-day?
He just clarified.
It was clarified that the objectives and the deliverables are met, and that the only issue that I heard tonight was stretches upon certain deliverables of, I believe, vaping and then providing CPR for parents with children with disabilities.
I believe there's other things. There are other things that were not.
If we had individual conversations, I could give you more. But I'm trying not, again, to besmirk someone's reputation. It's just not a good thing. There's a better model. You don't want to listen to the fact that there's MRC, there's CERT, there's Emergency Management, there's Board of Health, there's the Alliance, there's Public Safety, all of those things from a contractor that may be on vacation or may not be, without any continuity, from management of all these sixteen communities. Not a manager knows that they exist. Maybe two now because I've called them all. There, there, there's a fundamental issue with the upper-level management knowing that these things exist within their community.
And I think what we've heard over the past couple of weeks is that the community is, understands that but is still very much in favor of us keeping this within Grafton. You know, this is sort of one of those moments where we have to remember, we are on the public service side. And it may be difficult, it may be a new thing for us, it may be sixteen unwieldy communities who have even less interest than the one before it in figuring out what MRC is. But there are people in town, in many towns, receiving these services, and we owe it to them to try hard. And instead of abandoning this at what appears to be the first sign of resistance, let's figure out instead who these sixteen contacts are, who we're going to appoint across the region, deal with the heads of the Boards of Health, figure out what their phone numbers are, figure out their email addresses are, work a little closer with Lindsay, figure out what the invoicing issues are, rather than just throwing our hands up in the air and saying, forget it. This isn't worth it to us, and by the way, I don't like this contractor. That's, that's where I'm at.
Well, to be clear, we're not giving up MRC or Greater Grafton MRC.
We're not now.
Yeah, right.
And that's what, that's what the ask was at the last meeting, and I have a solution for that. The first one we didn't like because it was going to Worcester. No one liked that, because they felt that they didn't identify with Worcester. So I say, hey, keep it in-house for all the reasons I just mentioned relative to public safety and that continuity of service and connectivity to staff and management and program deployment for, again, attracting volunteers, training them, and deploying in them in event or emergency. That's, that's the ultimate goal for this contractor. We run a sixty-five million dollar operation with five hundred and fifty employees, and we're talking. And we're talking about a grant for seventeen thousand bucks. All of the things Lindsay has done have been good, but they're just above and beyond and not reimbursable from the grant for MRC. I think having a person in-house, in staff, on staff, doing this work makes more sense from a management perspective and a deliverable to the federal and state government.
And what happens if you can't manage that particular individual, you know, that's in-house? That's a stipend.
Just like this, this is on me. That's on me.
That's his job.
Either way, it's on me.
Right.
Alright, so, cause from what you and I just spoke about, just briefly, just for me, just says that the heads of these particular towns that have people underneath them, so to speak, um, that are involved in this process, a program that seems to be growing and collecting steam, um, you all need to catch up.
That's right.
That's the, that's where I'm at. And so not only have you not caught up, but now you're telling me to scrub what's currently in place um, under the guise that we're not allowed to tell you what to do in day-to-day operations, which we of course are not. But the sixty-five million dollar budget, the five hundred employees, the, the day-to-day operations, that all gets governed through the town meeting process, through the budget process, everything that goes along. I feel this is outside. Um, I am more than happy to, seeing that we're at the place we're at and we have a hard deadline of what, two weeks from now? And we have a Board of Health that's on board with how it's currently being run and operated and has already made an executive decision for three months. I don't mind going through a full year with this particular contract. Next year, when we pick this back up, find me three months before the deadline and we'll have a substantive conversation about it and we'll put it on the agenda and talk about it. Um, I will still be the chair at the time, um, and I will certainly entertain that. But for this year, it's too late in the game. I'm more than happy with how it's being presented. I've seen plenty of evidence on both sides. I don't, I'm, I don't wanna deviate from the path. I wanna continuity of service. I wanna continue it to grow. You guys figure out how to make it work. Um, that's just.
That, that's, that, that's, I, I understand your point. Just realize that the grant funding was reduced for next fiscal year. So the terms, even Ed mentioned there might be flaws inside that contract. You might wanna, you can't do the same terms, right? Cause it's not the same amount of money.
Okay.
As there was last year. So you will have to modify those things and deal with, whether the typographical or substantive issues, they have to be dealt with, cause they're not gonna match. So then you're gonna be set up for things. It's not gonna be approved by the state.
Alright, alright. Is there anything new to add to this particular thing? We gotta get to a point where we're moving forward. We're already under a time crunch, Lindsay. So if you can just be brief. And then I need some more recommendations from the board for a path.
I just would like to let y'all know that, um, FEP, uh, another funding source, they did put aside a little chunk of change because they knew that this was a very last minute sort of impulsive decision. And they wanted to keep Greater Grafton MRC. Um, so the contact I spoke to in Westboro said, I'll make sure, he's on the executive committee at FEP. And he said, I'm gonna make sure that we put a little bit of money aside so that, um, hopefully we'll keep Grafton around. Um, cause they were also contemplating be, becoming a host agency. So that's also another little pocket, just so that y'all are aware of, just for future in terms of, um, FY twenty funding. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Um, go ahead.
Dan, come on up.
Hi, Dan Kuscher, Sixth Little Road Boulevard. Uh, I just wanna say if you're going to be making changes to the contract, it might be a good idea to specify whose responsibility it is to submit the claims or the, um, whatever the term is.
The invoices?
Yep. Uh, just so there's no dispute going forward.
Thank you for that, Dan. I appreciate it.
Tim, who drafted this contract that we signed past, this past November or October?
The draft may have come from the original and then sent to Kramer for final review. So I don't know if it was the first one with, um, Dawn Farmer or not. I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
I think, I think it was Kramer.
Cause obviously we wanna make sure whatever's in this is gonna pass state muster. So we can't go willy-nilly. I mean, I, I think it's a point well taken, but, um, I'm nervous to change it. Okay. Do we wanna talk to Jenny first?
That would be my recommendation. And I know we're, we're under the gun with time, but I don't wanna make another poor decision based on a timeframe, even if we have to meet quickly. I think that's an important question to answer.
We have another meeting.
Yep.
It's just a matter of scheduling one. I know nobody wants to meet for one particular thing, but we will.
Who says no one wants to? It's fun.
It's so fun.
Yeah, we do have a meeting on the twenty-fifth. Um, I don't know if that's enough time to get it to Jenny. Is that, um, as far as a collaboration of the board, sending the contract over, seeing what we can get filled out for an additional year, making sure it includes, um, what it failed to include the last time, invoicing, things of that nature? Just give me some direction on where you want me to go.
And what's the role of the board versus the town administrator in making this decision?
Okay.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Yep.
Is that something that Jenny can handle?
Well, actually, I, I, just wider than that, when we have, um, any time of, in the future, the board is entering into a contract with a contractor, um, I would like to know. Because certainly this is gonna come up again.
Go for a year, it could come up.
No, I mean, with other contractors, you know, this is, again, the grants are, we're gonna be pursuing grants, right? We're gonna be, and there're gonna be people administering and there's gonna be people executing. So we're gonna wanna know.
Okay, so going forward for me, although we don't have anything to vote on tonight in particular, we're gonna go to Jenny with the information. Is this something that, um, you want me to talk to her directly? You want Tim to talk to her directly?
I'd like you to talk to her directly, please.
I mean, we can be in the same room, Tim, I'm sure. Both have questions and concerns. Make sure nothing gets missed. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, and should we have to have a meeting, um, that we can appropriately advertise for before the close of this? By June thirtieth, um, be prepared to, um, receive some dates.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, putting that to bed, um, well, for one week anyways. Uh, we do have another discussion item on there. Um, it's the, uh, select board goals. We're going to have an exodus. If, um, we are talking about select board goals, you wanna do it now? And then I'll give you a couple of seconds to clear out so we can move on to our next piece. Uh, we've done all the, you know what? Why don't we do a TA report? People are carrying out now.
You want POS first or me?
Hold on, you first.
So just briefly, um, next week you covered it, the school committee interviews for the joint appointment. Uh, I do wanna ask the board if they will entertain Andy Duchaine to come in before the board to vote on. The cable studio has to move from South Grafton to this building out front, the old police station. So there's a contract associated with that for a value of thirty-three thousand. It's inside the budget. We always knew it. But if you entertain him to do that so they can get that equipment moved over, so they can start that process.
On the twenty-fifth.
That's okay.
This is what you remount me earlier today.
Yes. Uh, fire truck scheduled for delivery on the twenty-sixth. That's the pumper tanker they went to Ohio to look at. The next engine that was slated to purchase is, uh, ninety percent, uh, spec is completed and we are going through a cooperative bid with other towns. So we won't go through a true procurement process. We'll use that option for the co-op as recommended by the chief. Uh, we are one year behind on the plan for purchasing, but we don't have any equipment that's down or in need of repair. So it's not, we're not in peril because of that. But we are one year behind. The, the truck that I just talked about being specced, we will look to do another, uh, lease purchase agreement for about six years. So we'll be carving off maybe a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand of free cash for that purpose for those five or six years. We already have the first year down payment. There was a capital plan for that first year for that truck. So that's good. We just gotta do five more.
That's the same as the way we did every, the other things.
Yeah, that, we did two in that way. We did it, the sweeper and one other piece of equipment.
We did the Univens.
Univens, yep, which is done and paid for. So those things fell off. So we'll be adding these things back. Uh, the Veterans Agent, we have obviously Justin Souza, who's the district director for the four communities. There is two part-time people under him. One is retiring. So we're starting that interview process. So you'll see that come before you in July for affirmation. We're the host community for that particular district. Grafton Road, I met with them yesterday. They wanna come before the board to discuss signalizing, like they did in the center of town, Route thirty and that intersection. We had Traffic Safety give you a report on it at one point. And then we're gonna have a peer review of what they've designed, meaning Grafton Road. But we get a lot of calls about the whistleblowing and traffic and, you know, we, we, it's an opportunity for the community to listen directly to them and what they're proposing. The, the building that will house the locomotives, it will be complete in July. So the winter time idling will go away, cause that's where they'll house those and keep those warm. So if we can deal with the whistling and the horn blowing through the intersection, that's part of the reason why we wanna have that discussion with the board. Uh, MBTA survey, we talked about that last week. Um, we still, we have about three hundred and fifty responses to that twelve-question survey, which is good. We're just trying to find out what people, where they come from and what, where they visit before they get to the MBTA. It'll help us when we go to market certain parcels around the train station for development, uh, relative to Pine Street in particular. Uh, and then finally, um, with the cooperation of the Economic Development Commission, uh, local bank, we, we, we funded a hotel study. The hotel chains will not talk to you unless you have a feasibility study done. We did that study and the initial report is Grafton could support a hotel, about an eighty-room chain, mid, mid-grade, Holiday and Garden, or Holiday Express or Hilton Garden Club, those type of establishments in Grafton. Uh, we're looking, they thought the MB, behind the MBTA station because of that whole cluster we're developing, that could be a possibility. Also the Wyman Gordon site as a component of their redevelopment, it could go there as well. But that's, um, probably a ten million dollar investment if we can sell it to a hotel developer to, to buy that land from WBDC. It's the last parcel on, um, Syntec Boulevard. So they'll come out sometime in July when that, when that report's complete, but that's the preliminary report as it stands today. So we always, I always guessed that, you know, between Natick and Auburn, there's nothing on the Mass Pike. There's some things on Route nine, which, you know, it's not office business-based type of establishment. So, you know, they don't include those in the mix, but there are no rooms from those two points that are worth staying at, to be quite honest. Um, so it, it, we, we, we had a hypothesis that this would be a good spot for it. We did the study and it turns out it works. So now we just have to market and promote it. But that concludes my, uh, report to the board.
See, anybody have any selectmen, select board reports?
Uh, briefly, the executive committee of the GSC has been formed. Uh, the finance committee selected Mark Adad and Barry Smith as their representatives. The school committee selected Amy Moore.
Okay, so that's moving forward. Anybody else? Okay, so the last piece we have on tonight. And if, if, oh, board members don't mind, if I could just put us in recess for about two minutes? Cause I really don't wanna miss any part of this discussion, but, uh, I need two minutes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what, what is the last thing?
The goals.
Select board goals, that's, um, Doreen brought up last week.
Oh, okay.
Um, I just don't wanna miss a piece of discussion. So Bill, can you put us in recess for two minutes, please? Thank you. Welcome back. Um, we have one last discussion piece. Um, this is something that was brought up, select board goals. We talked about it a couple of times. Doreen mentioned it last week. So we're gonna give it some, um, some time. Um, she brought some material from the town where she currently works at. I don't know what, um, if you wanna decide the, the goals, um, like what we want our actual goals to be for this year? We wanna go over procedure. I know we had talked a little bit about how to set the goals, the workshops, you know, the, to go somewhere and talk about it type of thing. If you wanna talk about like the structure of it, if we wanna get into actually what we wanna see on the select board produce over this fiscal year. Um, so I'll leave it open. I mean, it's pretty wide open as it is, but I'll give the floor to Doreen for the time being.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I'll start with, you know, there's no, um, there doesn't need to be, we don't have to strictly do it the way the town of Sutton does it. They've been doing it for thirteen years. It's worked really well. Um, I'm sure they've worked out some kinks in those thirteen years. So my suggestion is, um, you know, as you can see in the packet, um, we provided the goals and projected, uh, the goals and objectives meeting. They had the goals listed out, um, which are public and then the meeting minutes as well from that meeting. So, um, it's, it's really nothing crazy except that people, you know, the board gets together. It was four that were able to attend on and off-site and they all come with, um, you know, overall goals. Like Jen, for example, had talked about Super Park last week and not letting that kind of fall by the wayside and that that's an agenda item that she wants to keep active. And, you know, so based on some of the suggestions from the town of Sutton, these things kinda stay highlighted as goals for the board to continue to work toward, whether it's a year or two years or how it gets done. Again, you know, that's really the, the decision of, um, staff and, you know, what we can fund and whatnot. Um, and, you know, it's something that a lot of communities within the Massachusetts Municipal Association do. And what I would suggest is we could put together a, you know, very loose agenda for our first one and have some ideas in mind that we can bring forward. And, um, I would even suggest a Tuesday evening, since that seems to be a scheduled date that works for everybody. Maybe hold it a little earlier if that's, you know, I know you have a long commute, so, you know, we can work with that. And, uh, I'm happy to work with Tim and Becca on the site. We, if we can find a date. You know, we'll do, you know, High Fields. We'll do something offsite so it's more casual. It's not gonna be televised. It's just a roundtable meeting of these discussions. And then we bring them publicly to the next meeting. And that's really how that works. And if we wanna add more to the agenda, I'm fine with that, too.
So logistically speaking, so we would go somewhere in town. Maybe we, we canvass and we go different establishments.
Yeah, I mean, um, so, exactly, yeah, we'll just.
Strike what I, just. But establishments like that, so to speak.
Yeah, so, you know, Sutton held there is a Blackstone National Golf Course. They rented out the Putnam Room, which I've, I've held meetings there. I mean, we could even do something like that, but, um, I think there's something in Grafton.
I feel the same.
And the ideas.
The community barn.
Community barn, anything like that where we can just, you know, sit in a more casual, roundtable discussion and talk about ideas. I would assume we had, we'll have some overlap in these discussions, which is great. So it shouldn't take long. This was less than two hours that they talked about it and.
Do we want, and so these aren't gonna be filmed? And we've asked everybody in town, and it's been our policy in the past, that, um, all of the public meetings be taped, um, which is something we've held to. So for this particular instance, for, I understand that, you know, it's a, it's like a seminar, like a camaraderie building, you know, get us out of the element a little bit.
It's more like a workshop.
It's a retreat.
Yeah.
So just, we would have somebody there, um, well, Mr. Carlson would have to take notes.
Yeah, we would have to, we would post it and, and have minutes of it. Um, I'm, I'm in favor of that approach and let me tell you why before Kraft and Twitter jumps on me. You know, I can't ever tell in this room. It could be noon outside. I know it's nine o'clock, but it's always the same in here. And I, I do believe that environment affects mood. And it affects your ability to relate to another person. And there are people in this room that I only know from being in this room. And when you're on behalf of the town, for the town's benefit, to try and take yourself out of business mode and relate to somebody else's ideas about not what is or what policy is or how this vote should go, but what your vision is for what you wanna see in a very casual sort of way that then can become something a little more hard and fast like policy. Um, I think it's, I think it would benefit us to just get out of this room. Wear some shorts or something, shorts and a t-shirt, whatever, and make yourself comfortable. Grab some food and talk casually about your community and what you wanna see the board do in the coming year. I know there are people that are gonna be upset that it's not televised. It's still a public meeting that needs to be posted. Um, but it's just not in this particular room. So that's, that's my pitch. I, I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea, too. I mean, the goals, we will come back and report in this setting, what we talk about and what it is. So we're not, we're not hiding anything. You know, it will be, the minutes will be published and we will tell everybody what are, what the results are.
This, of course, is open to the public, right? The public decides that, did you wanna attend?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I just ask you, just a question? You, so the, the group in Sutton, they share ideas and then they just draw it up on a board and then when they come back to the meeting. and then when they come back to the meeting, we, we've done this a lot. I haven't done it here. But, you know, they'll say, you know, they'll have stickers, and they'll put posted notes on which one they wanna do collectively. They think that's the priority for the first quarter. And do they do that in the setting at the golf course? Or do they do that back in the meeting after they generate all the ideas of the goals, then vote and prioritize those goals?
I, I don't think either. I think these goals listed in the packet, which was, you know, five to seven per selectmen, they still call themselves, um, is it, you know, I don't think.
For a year?
Yeah.
Wow. I mean, I don't know what they are, but that.
Yeah, so the, so these are.
I think you gotta prioritize it a little bit.
We could do that. I'm not saying that stuff is perfect. I'm just taking this idea, saying, you know, um, but for example, you know, one of the selectmen says, use the capital, capital stabilization fund to obtain, obtain loans for things such as road repair. You know, so that's one of his goals, and it's put out there. So, you know, as discussions come up, they can look back and say, oh, yeah, you know, this person brought this up as a goal, or, you know, or, you know, Town Manager, look into that. This is how we're requesting the budget to look this year. So we could definitely take an additional step and prioritize the goals if we wanted to. These lists out based on, for those at home who can't see, based on the selectmen, what their goals specifically are. So, and there's some overlap to them.
So what do they do? Quarterly review where they're at, or they say, hey, we did this objective to meet that goal, and they report on that?
Yeah, or they'll look at their agenda, you know, every, they meet bi-weekly, and they'll make sure they're highlighting these things in their agenda, so they're not overlooked.
So if road repair was on the list, they'd say, we're doing this, and it relates back to the goal we set back in May.
Or we have a discussion with road repair. It's, oh, yeah, well, this particular person also talked about this, that we should bring this up, because that's one of our, you know, Select Board Goals for this year.
That's good.
But the purpose of the meeting is to, to, to arrive at consensus on the goals, right? It's not like one person is necessarily driving the whole thing. We kinda have to come together on which things we, we.
Yes, but I.
Choose as a group we would like to see focused on.
Yes, but I also think it's an opportunity, if we disagree on goals, that's okay, too, and I think that's why this is listed separately. So, for example, if I say something and Ed says, well, I don't agree with that goal, Doreen, it's listed under my goal that I brought forward to the Board, so. Because, you know.
Free-flow exchange of ideas.
Yeah, exactly.
In a comfortable environment.
Just in terms of the, the way the goals, I was just looking at the next step, in the way that the goals direct policy.
Right.
That would have to come to consent. You know, if we are switching direction.
Yep.
In the way of policy is being developed, then we would have to do that here.
Exactly, and, and perhaps, you know, if I disagreed with you on one of your policy decisions, and that discussion came forth in a meeting, then you could convince me that your policy idea is correct, right?
Right.
I should vote in favor of it. So I think just, this is like a, a brainstorming session. And again, this is the first time that Grafton, and as far as I know, has ever done this. I hear like seventy-five communities throughout Massachusetts do this. Sutton can't believe, when I asked them for a copy of this, they're like, we've been doing this for thirteen years. We'd be lost without it. So I can ask more questions if that's helpful. Um, but, but I, but I think that we should just kinda drive how we wanna do this and set up a time.
Excellent starting point.
Yep.
So I tell you what, why don't we, we'll meet off-screen, so to speak, to coordinate a, uh, when you wanna see this, what setting. Um, provide the input, and then I'll send it up.
Great.
And then, um, we'll, we'll start, probably in the next couple of months, you know. Summer schedules, of course, are always tough, but.
Yeah, yeah.
The, um, I don't see why we should skip a beat. So typically, I'm a stickler for, for putting it in the setting, make it on camera and stuff like that. But I don't mind, uh, I'm gonna see how it goes.
Okay.
I think that's great. Thanks for bringing it forward. Does that have anybody else on you with anything?
No.
Um, everybody happy where we left it? Doreen and I are gonna coordinate a little bit of it, just logistics. Okay, great. That's kinda all we have tonight. Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.